This meeting is a virtual meeting and we'll be streaming online on our Henry Spectrum Channel 180 and also on the Henry County's website along with the Henry County's Facebook page. So as soon as we get a confirmation from the IT team on the ability to screen share, we will begin the meeting with an invocation. So again, we thank you all for tuning in and thank you for joining today's special call Board of Commissioners meeting. Okay, I can see a screen share for this end. Okay, I see a screen share from this end. I see Commissioner Barn. I know Commissioner Clemmons is there. Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Wilson. Let's see, I'm trying to look around the screen share to make sure I can see everyone. I see the county manager as well.
Yes, sure, what I am on.
Okay, we've got a big echo behind you, Ms. Matthews, and I know it's because you're probably in the same room with others, so. Okay. Will the screen share remain up while we began? I will go ahead and like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We've got several commissioners, but before we call the meeting to order, it's going to begin with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, but I cannot see everyone from my end because of the screen share.
Okay, bear with me one second, I'll get out a screen share.
Okay, thank you, sir. So long as you'll be able to pull it back up, we're okay. Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so I see, I definitely see the pictures of at least two other commissioners, and I see Commissioner Holmes' name and Commissioner Clemmons' name. And so given that, I will ask that you all please join me for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, I ask that you please bow your heads in prayer if you care to join in this prayer. Father God, we know again that you are our sovereign Lord, and on this day, we again just thank you for all that you are doing, especially for our families and those that are now coming through COVID-19. We are asking, Father, that you bless those families whose lost loved ones, Father, due to this virus, but in any other situations as well, even as we continue to acknowledge the family of Michael Wayne Smith as we honored him on this day. We ask, Father God, that you will just continue to be with us as we enter into 2021, and even on today's meeting, we ask that you bless this board with wisdom and guidance and that your will will be done throughout this meeting. And all that agree in Jesus' name, please say amen. And if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So at this now, time now, I will call this special call meeting to order, and at this time, I will ask for a motion to accept the agenda, which is to discuss the service delivery strategy, which is required by each county and all of its cities to approve, develop, implement a service delivery strategy that specifies the manner in which all services, government services, will be provided and funded. So at this time now, we will open the floor for a motion to accept the agenda to discuss the service delivery strategy. I see Commissioner Holmes as a motion. Okay, I cannot see Commissioner Holmes or Commissioner Clemmons, so.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, you make a motion. Okay, so I see a sec, I heard a second from Commissioner Clemmons. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand or speaking. Okay, I see the hands of Commissioner Barn, Commissioner Wilson, I heard Commissioner Clemmons, Commissioner Holmes, your vote, please. Commissioner Holmes, your vote. Okay, that was a quorum, so we did say, we did here for it to move forward with the agenda as presented. So at this time now, I will turn this over to the county manager and also our county attorney. Boy, I do know that we have already previously voted for most of the items on the service delivery strategy, so we're looking forward to hearing of more of the details so that we can hopefully move forward with the full position of this Board of Commissioners. So at this time, I'll now turn it over to our county manager.
Good afternoon, Chair Wood, Vice Chair, and members of the board, and thank you also very much for agreeing to have this call meeting specifically during the holiday, and I think you all recognize the importance of us moving into 2021 with this service delivery strategy, hopefully behind the county and the four cities. As you all know, we did bring to the board earlier this year the service delivery strategy, and we indicated at that time that there were still a couple of areas in which we had not come to some type of agreement, either on the county side and/or the city side. And I think that we are, we are there in terms of where the, in terms of what the county is recommending and in terms of what I believe the cities may be able to live with. So this afternoon, our county attorney will very briefly go through all of the services again, but then we'll highlight those two specific services being roads and fire services for the City of McDonough, in which we were not there earlier this year. If you all have any questions, please let us know. Patrick and I are going to tag team this, so if you have specific questions, I don't know if you want to just let Patrick get through the presentation and then ask those questions, or if you have one that's just burning, go ahead and raise your hand and/or speak for those commissioners that I can't see, so that we'll know what your questions are. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Patrick. He is going to have to share his screen, so Chair Wood, once he goes into the share screen mode, if there are commissioners that you can't see and I can see, I'll just jump in and let you know that you have a commissioner that is either raising their hand or needing to be recognized. But at this time, I'll turn it over to Patrick, and then we will answer any questions that the board may or may not have, or board may have, sorry.
Chair Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Holmes said that he cannot take himself off of mute from the system.
Okay, I'm not sure, IT, is there anything from your end that you can do?
There it is, okay. Can you guys see me? Because I can't take it off video either.
No, sir, we can't see you, but we can hear you now, and I'm glad to hear that. So no, sir, we can't see you.
IT, can you help me with the video?
There's no way that we can enable your video on this end. My only recommendation would be to drop out and to rejoin.
Okay, I'll do that.
And control the mic, but not the video.
All right.
Okay, and if Commissioner Holmes is going to drop out and come back in, I would rather us allow him that time to come back into, into the meeting. So again, Ms. Matthews, I can't see everyone now, but please let me know when Commissioner Holmes returns, so that you all can begin, or you can begin when he returns, I should say.
Don't worry about it, my whole, my pad is locked, so I'll just stay here verbally.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you much. Okay, you may begin, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As you are all aware, we are required by Georgia law to negotiate and enter into a service delivery strategies agreement with the municipalities within the county. We have been engaged in this process for the better part of a year, and we have a proposal to present to you today that has been, for the most part, and we will point out any issues, for the most part, the indications to us are that the cities will agree to this proposal that I'm about to walk through with a few specific exceptions that we will talk about in detail. And I'm going to run through this fairly quickly. This will look somewhat familiar, because this is very similar to the presentation that we've made to you in the past, I think on two separate occasions. I will apologize in advance for the, for the, for the quality of some of the images that you'll see on the PowerPoint. We were provided only with PDF documents from the, from the cities who have been the drafters of the documents. We have not been provided with Word documents despite our requests, and as you know, a PDF is just a photograph of a photocopy, so I have put into this agreement exactly what was provided to us. I think it's all readable. To the extent you have problems on your screen, let me know, and we'll make sure that we get those addressed in a way that you understand what you're voting on. And the way this presentation is set up, I'm walking through each of the different service areas that the SDS law requires us to address. I'm walking through them roughly alphabetical. We will, and I'm walking through all of the ones, even the ones that you've acknowledged and have approved in the past, but we felt like it was easier just to go through all of these services at one time, so we don't have to jump back and forth between, between meeting minutes if we want to look back and see what we did. So I'm starting off with annexation. So we are required to address how we will handle annexation, and in lieu of any specific agreements. So in lieu of any complex or specific procedures, like the county and the cities had in years past, we've decided the best thing for us to do is simply comply with Georgia law as relates to annexation. So the cities, the cities will have the right to annex as provided under Georgia law. The county will have the right to object as provided under Georgia law. Building permits and inspections will be a service provided by the county only with respect to unincorporated projects. It will be funded by fees and revenue generated within the department. To the extent it is funded by tax revenue, it will be funded by a service area consisting only of the unincorporated areas of Henry County. And if you will recall, back in October, I believe, or maybe sooner than that, earlier than that, the Board of Commissioners has created those various service areas, and this is where we're dropping those, these services into one of those service area buckets. So building permits and inspections are an unincorporated only service provided by the county. Each city will provide its own building permits and inspections, and they will fund those from city revenues. Building and grounds maintenance, the county will provide building and ground, grounds maintenance on its properties and any property that it may lease from a city, and in the big agreement that you all have includes the lease that we have at the City of Stockbridge for the police precinct, in which we agree to maintain the buildings and building and grounds. But we will maintain buildings and grounds through use of countywide property taxes. The cities will maintain their buildings and their grounds through their own revenues. Cemetery is likewise. To the extent any city has a cemetery, they will fund it through their own revenues. If the county were to operate a cemetery, it would be funded countywide. City prisoners are funded by means of an intergovernmental agreement that the sheriff has tentatively agreed to. As you all are aware, we have a new sheriff coming on board. I do not believe this agreement has been shared with the new sheriff, but we will do so, and we will endeavor to get his approval as well. But what that agreement calls for is that the city will pay the sheriff's department $37.58, which is the cost of housing city prisoners, and that will be paid commencing the moment that a city prisoner is incarcerated in our jail for a violation of a municipal, county, municipal code. Any prisoner incarcerated because of a state law violation will simply be paid for by the sheriff. That's the sheriff's job is to incorporate, is to imprison anyone convicted of a state law violation. City prisoners for transport, the sheriff will provide transport to county prisoners, and each city will provide transport to its own citizens or its own prisoners, and transport would typically be to and from court or to and from medical care. The City of Stockbridge, however, provides the sheriff's office with a vehicle, and in consideration for that, the sheriff has agreed to transport Stockbridge's prisoners free of charge, free of additional charge. Code enforcement is provided in the unincorporated areas of the county only by the county. Each city can provide its own code enforcement. Code enforcement is funded to the extent it is funded by tax revenue, by a countywide tax, I'm sorry, by district tax, only in the unincorporated areas. Likewise, with the comprehensive plan, it is funded by tax revenue only in the unincorporated areas. Each city can fund and prepare its own comprehensive plan. There is nothing, however, in this agreement that would prohibit us from working with one or more of the cities and forming a joint comprehensive plan. Coroner's service is a countywide service, and it is funded by countywide adware and Courts, indigent defense for municipalities. Each city is responsible for providing indigent defense to defendants in their own courts through their own revenues. Indigent defense in state and county courts is provided by countywide funding. Court security and service of process, that's a function of the sheriff's office. The sheriff performs those duties for county courts and state courts and does so by means of countywide property taxes. Detention of, control of animals, detention and control of animals. Our animal control department serves countywide and is funded both by fees and fines and property taxes, and those are assessed countywide. And you will note in the agreement that each of the cities are agree, are agreeing to adopt a uniform animal control ordinance, and that is in this, the section down here where my mouse is pointing. Each of the cities would adopt a uniform animal control ordinance, authorizing the county to enforce their municipal ordinances and agreeing that their fines would be remitted to the county to operate the animal control department. The Development Authority, the Henry County Development Authority, is funded by countywide property taxes. Economic development for municipalities, to the extent the cities have independent development authorities, they are responsible for funding those on their own. Development Plan Review is a service undertaken only by the county in the unincorporated areas, and any tax revenue that supports that would be generated in the unincorporated district only. Elections, federal, state, and county elections are funded countywide. Municipal elections are funded, are conducted through an agreement, and they're in your package, between each of the cities and the Board of Elections, which this board will also ratify those agreements. And those agreements call for the municipalities to pay the Board of Elections the cost of conducting those elections. That's how it has been done here for, for generations, I believe, and there's, I don't think there's any, any issue with, with continuing that, at least at this point. Hampton has its own electric utility, so we are required to address that, and obviously Hampton's electric utility is funded by city municipality, City of Hampton, property taxes or fees for the service. Our E91, E911 system is a countywide service, and it is funded countywide. Emergency management is a countywide service, and it is funded countywide. Emergency Medical Services, EMS services, are a county service, countywide service, and they are funded countywide. The Health Department is a countywide service, and it is funded countywide. Fire Services, Fire Services are one of the ones that we had to address more recently, and I'm going to go a little slower talking about Fire Services. So what we have done with Fire Services is there are two separate districts for Fire Services. One of these districts already exists because you created the district back when you created the special service districts. That district consists of unincorporated Henry County, the cities of Stockbridge, Hampton, and Locust Grove. Those are the areas where the county fire department is the only fire department. So your fire service serves that fire district. There will also be a separate district which consists of the City of McDonough. The City of McDonough has its own fire service, yet the county likewise serves the City of McDonough. So Fire Services will be funded as follows. The Fire District, which includes the entire county except for McDonough, will pay, well, they will all pay the same millage rate towards the operation of your Fire Services. The City of McDonough District, the, or the incorporated area of the City of McDonough, will pay a millage rate equal to 45% of the millage rate imposed on the rest of the county. So the City of McDonough has a lower fire service millage rate to the county, and that is in recognition of the fact that City McDonough residents also pay for a city fire department. The whole point of service delivery strategies is to ensure that all county residents receive county services, and they don't pay twice for the same service. Now, the county's position throughout these entire negotiations has been that the county's fire service is necessary for the City of McDonough to cover its residents in, in protecting it from fire events. And in fact, I think the data shows that the county's fire department responds to virtually every fire in the City of McDonough. So in recognition of that, the City of McDonough has agreed to an assessment of 45% of the total millage rate. Where we differ, however, is in a couple of the details on this one screen, and I know it's a little bit hard to read, but my mouse is hovering over one section that says the lesser of. Our proposal, unlike the cities, this is the city's proposal, our proposal, what we're asking you to approve, is to delete the lesser of 0.497 mills, so that whatever the fire millage rate is in the county, the city's residents will pay 45% of that millage rate. We also are asking you to delete the section my mouse is hovering over right now, which is a limit on the annual increase of the fire millage in the amount of 1.67%. So the city had two concerns, and to be fair to the city, I want to let you know what those, those concerns are. The concern primarily is they want some predictability, some idea of where this fire millage rate will go, and they want to cap it so there's not a substantial increase in any particular year from one year to the next in the millage rate. Their proposal is a 1.67% annual cap. Based on that annual cap, your current millage rate, or the current millage rate in the City of McDonough would be 0.497. The most it could be next year would be 0.505. However, we don't know how much the overall fire millage rate will increase. It is our recommendation that those limitations be, be excluded, and that the city's millage rate simply track the county millage rate, but it's 45% of it. If the millage rate, if for some reason we have to assess a higher millage rate, a substantially higher millage rate for Fire Services, that millage rate should increase proportionately in the City of McDonough. So that's one of the areas that we are not in total agreement on. The only difference between us and the City of McDonough on this issue is the annual cap, and management's position is that that annual cap could serve to shift the burden of the Fire Service further away from the City of McDonough and impose it more on the rest of the county. So our recommendation is to eliminate those caps and make it a straight 45% assessment to the city. I'm going to jump back in and move a little faster again. GIS services are provided only in the unincorporated areas and are provided or are funded only by unincorporated property taxes. Housing Authority, to the extent any city, and I know Hampton and McDonough have these, if any city has a housing authority, it's funded exclusively by city fees, city revenues. Your library service is countywide, it is funded by unincorporated, all, all county taxpayers. Park Service is one that's a little bit, a little bit slightly different from what we presented before. Under the current version, the county will operate all county parks, county-owned parks, regardless of where they are located. The cities will operate all city-owned parks, with the exception of a few that I will mention in a moment, that the county will operate. Likewise, the cities have agreed that 50% of their impact fees assessed for parks and recreation will be paid to the county to allow the county to make capital improvements necessitated by new growth. The, I apologize for that box. The, we're going to have to live with it, I'm sorry. In the City of McDonough, Alexander Park, Richard Craig Park, Craig Park, and Avalon Park are city-owned parks, but we have agreed that the county would operate and maintain those parks. Likewise, in Locust Grove, Warren Holder Park and Tanger Park are city-owned parks, but we've agreed that the county would operate and maintain those parks. Additionally, what's not on here, because we got this word late yesterday, the City of Hampton has requested that we actually convey to them RW Coley Park, and that they would assume operation, maintenance, and control of that park. That is a proposal we made to the city months ago, and we would recommend that the board authorize that as well. Planning and zoning, planning and zoning is provided by the county only in the unincorporated areas, and to the extent it is funded by taxes, those taxes are only in the unincorporated area. Police Services, you are all aware of how Police Services works. There is a Police Service District which consists of the unincorporated areas of Henry County and the City of Stockbridge. The cities of Hampton, Locust Grove, and McDonough provide their own Police Services, and we do not tax them for these Police Services. There is an intergovernmental agreement you'll be asked to execute with the City of Stockbridge. What that agreement provides is that the city, that the county will provide Police Services within the City of Stockbridge on the same basis that it does throughout the rest of the county, and that, and that we will assess property taxes at the same rate as we have addressed, as we assess them in the rest of the county. Next is your fleet vehicles, the purchase, maintenance, et cetera of your fleet vehicles is funded countywide. Roads and Streets, this is a new one that we want to go through fairly slowly. So where we are with Roads and Streets is this year, under the current tax year, Roads and Streets are funded countywide. The proposal, however, is that commencing next year, we will have a special, a special district for Roads and Streets, which will consist only of the unincorporated areas of Henry County. Commencing immediately, the county will be responsible only for county streets, the cities will be responsible only for city streets. A city street is any street located within the city limits, or where both sides of the property, both sides of the road are located within the city. All other streets are county streets. What we've decided to do this year, because we did not create the special tax district, is make a one-time allocation to each of the cities in the amount shown on the screen right now. Those amounts reflect each city's proportionate portion of total road miles within the county. So we recognize, I think all of the parties recognize, that city taxpayers utilize county streets and that county taxpayers utilize city streets, and that the burden and the cost of those should be shared in some form or fashion, and that's what this seeks to do, is to ensure that some portion of tax revenue paid by the city residents stays in the city. Going forward with special districts, we will receive no property taxes from city districts, from city taxpayers, so there'll be no need to share any with the cities. Also going along with this agreement will be that the cities will now be responsible for their roads, and you will not be. We have provided within this agreement a mechanism by which your department heads, your transportation or public works directors, between the county and each of the cities will meet on at least an annual basis to discuss places where it makes sense for us to joint venture or work together. And the most obvious places are those roads that go in and out of the cities. Nobody thinks it's a good idea for us to improve portions of a road that go in and out of a city and only improve the county portions of that road. Likewise, I don't think the cities think it's a good idea to improve just their portions of the road. So when we come across those roads that need some work and some repair, we will continue to work with the cities to try to joint venture those projects, to both make sure the roads are improved in a, in a seamless manner, and to make sure we get cost savings when we can. There is a provision in this agreement that we're recommending be deleted, and that is at the very bottom of the screen under Section D, where it says, "The county agrees to authorize the County Department of Transportation to provide technical and engineering assistance to the cities without charge." That's just not something we're capable of doing. Your engineers in your department of transportation can't, can't really work for the city. They work for you, they, they don't have excess capacity. They don't have the time and we certainly don't want to pay an engineer to be performing services for another entity. But we will commit to continue to work with them the way we always have. Oftentimes, I think we're called upon to provide really high level technical assistance. And I don't see any reason to expect that that will change. But we're not in a position that we can contract to provide that type of service for the cities. So the recommendation we're going to make is to approve this agreement as presented with the omission of the county's obligation to provide technical and engineering assistance. Moving on, senior citizen services, that is a service provided countywide and it is likewise funded countywide. Soil erosion and control, the county provides that service in the unincorporated areas and it is funded only by unincorporated property, property taxes. Solid waste likewise is an unincorporated service funded by unincorporated tax revenues. Stormwater management likewise, an unincorporated service funded by unincorporated property taxes and fees. Stormwater is really funded only by fees. We collect fees from unincorporated residents. And those fees are used to fund the county stormwater management program. Each city that has a stormwater management program funds it separately. Transit is a countywide service funded countywide. Vehicle equipment and maintenance is likewise funded countywide. And your water and sewer services are actually handled through the Henry County Water Authority. But we address those in this agreement because they are one of the services that were contemplated to address. One other thing that, that will be addressed in the service delivery strategy agreement that is not addressed directly in the, in those Form twos that we just went through. That's what the Department of Community Affairs calls those documents that we just went, ran through. The service delivery strategy agreement contains a section about the collection of property taxes and fees by the tax commissioner. That is really an agreement between the tax commissioner and the cities. But we have included in here because it is a service that is provided in the unincorporated areas and within the cities. You don't necessarily agree, you have no power to agree or disagree with the tax commissioner's fee sharing proposal, but it is included within the document that you, you've been provided. And I just wanted you to be aware of it. And lastly, there's a joint resolution. Our anticipation is that we will adopt this resolution with the changes that we've suggested or whatever other changes you recommend. We will forward it to the cities and we will await their responses. So I ran through all of that awfully quickly. I'm happy to walk backwards and refocus on any specific issues or areas. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, thank you. I cannot, I see-
Chair Wood, you're muted.
Oh.
And Commissioner Holmes', his hand is up if you can't see him.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, this message is for Patrick. Patrick, how does this agreement impact, say Spear Road? We approved the resurfacing of Spear Road a few months back. And I would, I would say at least sixty percent of that road is in the city. Does this agreement make it possible for us to go back and negotiate that Stockbridge put some skin in the game on that road or do we just continue to move it forward?
Well, there's certainly nothing that would prohibit us from approaching a city and asking for a contribution on any road. Certainly we can do that. The fact that we have already contracted to do that road, I would suggest that, that, you know, we're, we're already in it. But I, I think certainly Sherry and her staff could certainly make those calls and have that conversation. But going, going forward, the way this agreement will affect, the next time you do a road like Spear Road is that before, we would not enter into a contract with a contractor to improve portions of Spear Road located within the city going forward. The city would have to come to the table with us or we would just leave out their portions of the road. And likewise with the city. But, but as our agreements stand today, well, we don't have an agreement prior to this one. So we, we can certainly go to the city and, and suggest that they contribute some, but we don't have a mechanism to compel that.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask that question is because we're all allocated about a half million dollars a year to, for resurfacing. And that road is going to cost a little bit over a half million dollars. So that was the only road that I could get done. So it would be, if there is a possibility, and I'm not saying that we want to force them to do anything, but if there's that possibility to have that conversation with the, the city of Stockbridge, you know, we may be able to maybe resurface another road in that particular area.
And Commissioner Holmes, I, I certainly can't speak for the cities, but I felt like there was definitely a willingness for the cities to work with the county on those joint projects. One of the things that we are doing already is for our transportation planning director, we are having meetings with the public work directors and city managers on projects that we foresee could possibly be joint projects. So I'll make sure that at their next meeting, Mr. Baker does make Mr. Knighton and Mr. Aaron aware that Spear Road is a project that you'd like to see a partnership with. Instead of we're able to get them to come to the table and then get a memorandum back to the board for that. We can definitely work on that.
Yeah, I just think, you know, it, it paves the way for us to get more done in terms of roads that are in bad shape throughout our districts.
Absolutely, I agree.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Okay. Okay, I cannot see the other commissioners or there are any other commissioners that are wishing to speak at this time. I'll look to the county manager to help me acknowledge them.
Chair Wood, I see Commissioner Wilson's hand is up.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson will acknowledge you at this time.
Yeah, this question's for Patrick as well. You mentioned in the parking rec, the city gives fifty percent of the impact fee. Is there something in the language how we collect those impact fees? Is it going to be quarterly, annually? How, how are we going to collect those?
We did not address the time for the payments. That would be just, that would be something that we would typically just have your management staff work out. We can certainly call for those to be paid, you know, quarterly or annually. I, I wouldn't suggest anything more than quarterly. In fact, quarterly might be, you know, you might end up with a lot of administrative work for a very low amount of money, but we can certainly address that. I would recommend, I would recommend let Sherry and her counterparts at the city work out, you know, the mechanism for timeliness, but maybe make it at least annually.
And I think also Commissioner Wilson, what's important is we've got to identify which projects need to be consolidated. So I think it's part of that conversation, we can then identify what the funding sources will be remitted to the county.
You're echoing a little bit, so I'm not sure how much everyone was able to connect with that on that. So if you could restate it again, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, I apologize, but so Commissioner Wilson, what I was indicating is that one of the most important parts of this service delivery strategy is going to be the collaboration between the county and the cities. And so for those projects that are capital projects in which we will ask the city to contribute the impact fees, we will need to work with them on identifying what those projects are going to be. And I think once we've identified the project and what, what the cost is going to be, then within that agreement, we can specify when the payment needs to be made to the county.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Wilson? Okay, cannot see, are there any other commissioners that are wanting to speak?
Commissioner Barham has his hand up, Chair Wood.
Commissioner Barham, we acknowledge you now, you may speak. Commissioner Barham, I think your phone may be muted, we're not yet here. Okay, there you are.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I want to commend Sherry and the staff and, and our county attorney and, and all the cities for working where we are today. I think this is a good proposal. I think it's something we live with. I know there's probably some things we would, some side we want this and some we want that. But this shows a, a strong support for us to work together in Henry County as a whole. And so I'm excited about this, to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barham. Anyone else, any other commissioner, any comments?
Chair Wood, I don't see any other hands up. I know Commissioner Clemens, if you have a question, you can unmute yourself.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. No questions from Commissioner Clemens, Chair Wood.
Okay, and, and my comments are much along what Commissioner Barham has just stated. First of all, this has been somewhat of a long journey, but I appreciate all of the hard work that has gone into this, especially at the county manager's level, along with the county attorney and the cities. What I'm really glad to see in this service delivery strategy is that we got something that is pretty simple. I mean, if it's county related, the county's responsible, it's the city's, you know, and it's within this jurisdiction, the cities are responsible. But it does include much of a collaboration and working together. And that's what, this is all about the citizens. So I again commend everyone for bringing us to this point. And I'm looking forward to, again, hearing back from the cities as this is, in my opinion, a very good agreement. So hearing none, further comments, we were now asked that we remove the screen sharing at this time so that we can at least get all of the commissioners on screen. There we go. Okay, so at this point in time, we're now open the floor for a motion.
So move.
Okay, we see Commissioner Holmes with the motion.
Chair, before, before you call for a second, I would, I would ask Commissioner Holmes, if you would make your motion to approve the SDS agreement as presented with the changes, with the following changes, to remove, in the fire services agreement, to remove the limitations or caps on the change in the millage rate for the city of McDonough district. Number two, under the parks section, revise that to reflect that the, the county will operate and maintain the parks that I showed on the screen earlier and that we will convey Coley Park to the city of Hampton. And lastly, number three, under the roads and streets, that we would delete the provision regarding the counties providing engineering services to the cities.
I motion to, to approve the SDS agreement with everything that Patrick just stated.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Okay, is there a second? Okay, I see a second from Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, seeing none, the floor are all in favor, please signal by raising your hands or speaking, yay.
Aye.
So that makes it a unanimous vote for those that are in attendance. So congratulations, thank you all for bringing us this far into our service delivery strategy. And so again, thank you board for today. I know many of you had other commitments and I want to again say thank you staff and county attorney for bringing it to this board so that we can end this year addressing the service delivery strategy. So thank you again. So at this time now, we, that was the only agenda item for today's special call meeting. So if there's no further business for the matter of this board, we are now accept the motion to adjourn. I see Commissioner Holmes with the motion, Commissioner Barham as a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand.
Aye.
All right, okay, here Commissioner Clemens. And so best wishes for a great 2021 and beyond. So Happy New Year, everyone. Have a good one.